You really wouldn't see it unless you're on the right field lines and also in the stands. From the remainder of the park, if you're looking from the east side looking west, you would really, or south. Because it was an angle, you really wouldn't see it sticking out.
There's a large tree there too.
And there's a large tree.
When you said it doesn't go away.
Yeah.
It's just a problem to here. And it ain't beautiful.
You know.
If you do like to sell towers.
Less lattice.
Bones.
That was a good point though, there is that large oak tree outside out here too that's, that will probably further disguise that a bit from some of the ages.
Oh, give the word, a bit.
Yeah.
No questions. Phil?
I had a little bunch of them, but some of them have been answered already. Originally we sit the town, who I noticed apparently went out even though I didn't get a copy. And was the parks commission informed?
Yes, we emailed the staff report and agenda directly to the commissioners.
And we also, I think, made some, asked some questions about where comments from other field users groups. Do we have those?
I also emailed the staff report and agenda to the field users. I did not receive comments that may be present tonight though.
Well, we're not in public dirt.
Exactly. Well, you generally take help comments. It's not a public hearing correct.
We're talking about improvements and these are really brand new facilities. And they certainly, as you pointed out, are going to change the character of the park. No question about that. Brand new facility.
Yeah, it's rebuilt in the same location, but it's new, yeah.
There are no permanent stands or now so it's not being rebuilt. This is all new.
No, but there's an existing backstop and there's existing dugouts and fencing and.
Originally, some years ago, the Menlo Athens Little League had an EIR. And I've asked several times where is that EIR? And nobody seems to be able to find it or grasp it. Do we know where it is?
We've done an exhaustive search and the records cannot locate it. We've also outreach to the applicant at the time on behalf of Little League and they do not retain a copy.
Rasp?
Yes.
On your schedule here, it seems really more difficult. How are there elevation, elevation of the field? Plan that you gave us, it's really hard to read the topographical, the numbers in there. For example, I was out there the other day and it looks to me there's almost a 18 inch, two foot drop from the back of the current field, from the rear of the current field to the surface of the tennis courts. How are you supposed to handle that? Because you're moving, you propose to move the new construction right up against the tennis courts. So there's going to be a step right there?
Uh, we're actually not moving it right up against the tennis courts. It's, it's, um, we're still like 20 or 30 feet away from, from the tennis courts to the, uh, to the backside of the structure.
I assume we can find that dimensional plan at any place. I didn't see it.
Uh, we may not have dimensioned that particular separation.
Lighting inside the building? Can you give a look?
Uh, well, there's no intent for night games. So there wouldn't be the need to light, um, the grandstands or the seating area. There'll, there'll be lights inside the bathrooms, of course, and the storage areas. We haven't, we've talked about whether there needs to be some safety lighting around the perimeter of the exterior of the building with some safety downlights. But I think we're open to.
A lot of the things we're going to want to really detail along.
Sure.
Also, sound system. Are you going to have a, a sound system for all folks sitting there?
No.
Is that absolute, positive, forever no?
We will not have a sound system there.
Okay. Building code. You talk about tracker and I presume you'll have tracker and associated maintenance materials. Is, is it okay to put that underneath a, a grandstand area?
Well, it's, it's, it's not underneath. It's, uh, it's outside of the, the stand area itself. So this here is the seating area. And, uh, and the, the part that wraps around the backside is, is that storage space. So there's no, um, there's no real storage area beneath that. It, it only, it only rises about five feet from the grade to the top, the highest level seat.
So fuel storage wouldn't be a problem?
No.
No night activity? No Friday night lights?
Nope.
No lights? The existing game schedule remains effectively the same. So we currently play Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday nights and then Saturday.
In May, I think 2011, your original proposal talked about a snack bar, snack shack. It's not shown here. What's the future for that?
Decided not to do it.
Or me?
We decided not to do it because there was pushback against that. So people said that they didn't want any commercial entities. We offered it to the games to generate revenue for their purposes. They were on board, but there was resistance to it. So we decided to mix that plan.
Can I ask a quick, quick question? The contender would advertise it. It's not going to have Mr. Sobrano's name on it, but it should say Ariana.
A couple of last questions. Who, for how long, is responsible for the restroom cleaning and maintenance and overall 24/7 security?
Well, the maintenance, we have, we will have an endowment to handle the maintenance of the field, which can also be done for the restrooms. That's something that would need to be negotiated with the town. If we provide additional restrooms, we could certainly do it. But if there was, uh, what's the best word to use here? A lack of support, I guess. We could pay for it year round, but that would be a very big cost center for us as well. But with the endowment, we're open to suggestions and ways to make it work for everyone. Because we want those bathrooms to be used all the time. We don't want to have to lock them up. Like I said, I'm a soccer coach too. I've had kids literally wet their pants trying to get to the bathroom. So I want them to be there.
And who pays for the general field? Stand maintenance, utility service bills? How does that look? How long has it done?
We, we pay.
It could be here forever.
We pay user fees to the tenant batteries and now that was just negotiated the last week council meeting. We also handle the field maintenance. We will upkeep and upgrade, or not upgrade, but just upkeep the facilities themselves with coats of paint every roughly five to seven years. Those are calls I'm anticipating. We will make sure that any light bulbs, et cetera, are changed. That's part of the reasoning why the storage there, so we can have a stockpile, light bulbs, toilet paper, things that are necessary for the facilities.
Parking, what is parking means? The proposed library may well restrict Menlo Athens Little League parking requirements.
Uh, that's a huge challenge for us, obviously. We don't expect, again, without an increase in usage that's significant. We don't anticipate any further need for more parking. If the library does in fact end up going into the park, that's something that will have to be addressed jointly.
Do you plan to improve all the grass area or just the part that's being in the field?
The, the, the thinking is that, that whole quadrant of what the field is, I, I don't believe the league was planning to, you know, touch this area.
It would be cost prohibitive to do that.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Where is soccer and lacrosse practice and how would you fit in?
So I won't speak for lacrosse. I know MJ's here and she can speak to that. I can tell you on soccer, again, I've been out there for years. For soccer currently, in the right field area, you'll see here how Carl's put in the sloping areas. The Kinder League generally takes over in this section here and then the older teams practice in here in various quadrants. I believe there are eight to 10 fields for practice areas, all 50 by 50 roughly. The teams that get saddled here and get the last pick always end up pushing out because it slopes so badly. Also, this area here at the, in our center field area, there's an uptick, uptick in the slope. And the teams always reshuffle and move. So what we're proposing is to feather that in better and make it smoother. So more teams can practice, including the right field area, and actually level it out so teams can practice there. So with this proposal, we believe that we'll increase the safe playing for other sports as well. And I met with Mike Milano, who's the AYSO president, last year. Talked to him, told him about what our plan was and he thought that's great because they are in dire need of making sure that everybody there has their space. It's, during soccer season, it's pretty chaotic out there. You get out there on a weeknight and there are a couple hundred kids and parents and everything going on. And with those, everybody's squeezed together because of the, of the field quality. It makes it pretty tough.
Do they do soccer practice on the other parts of the grass area?
Yes, they do the entire field.
The entire field?
Entire field. And AYSO originally when I met with Mike Milano, he offered to potentially contribute to the cost. We haven't really gone down that road yet. If it's something that AYSO wanted to do, we'd certainly welcome that and potentially increase the scope of the project, but that's not our decision.
Because certainly the entire area of the court should be.
I would not disagree with you. I would not disagree with you.
Very fortunate. And lacrosse plays, practices in your area, the baseball area also?
From time to time, they play a little baseball, lacrosse, and they get out there on the field as well.
Where do they play games?
MJ.
Primarily.
I'm sorry, let me just get your name.
Oh, sure. I'm MJ Davy. So basically, any flat open space, we use out there as well.
Some of it's pretty rough.
What's that?
Some of it's pretty rough for.
The grass?
Yep.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, right.
But we're grateful to be on there. It's tough to find a field space. So we're, we're happy to use it and, uh, you know, it's the best we can find.
Yeah. The outfield fence that's removable, how high is that?
Uh, it's about four feet.
Four feet, so it's just a barrier, a barrier.
It's just a barrier. And with the PVC pipe and the way it's designed, kids can literally run into it and it just collapses right over. It's a mesh, it's a nylon mesh material with yellow tape across the top and safety caps on top of each one of the PVC. So it's a safe, really good fence. It blends in well. I originally, as I mentioned earlier, got the technology and the information from Hillsborough Little League when we were up there last year for a postseason tournament. And they're the ones that said, yeah, AYSO loves it because we can take it hard out on weekends if they need it for spring select soccer. They can play right over the base, the, the plugs that have below grade. It's totally safe and.
So once the poles are taken out, there's a cap that goes on the, on the.
No, no, the caps go right on top of each PVC pole that goes into the ground. So that way you don't have a rough.
You take the pole out?
You take the pole out. Take the pole out for anything that's in there. Think of a, of a golf hole and how it sits slightly between the grade. And, and it's just a PVC, it's made out of PVC, it sits below grade and it's smooth, you can run right over it.
My fear is someone stepping into that hole.
Oh, it, it's only that big around.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. It's tiny. It's, it's an inch diameter. I mean, and with the, the holes that are already on that field, that would be the least of the worries.
The poles on the fence, I would gather are mustn't have a inch in diameter.
They're about a quarter of an inch.
Are there any other questions? By the way, okay. We will now take a, a comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
Sure.
Or?
Again, I'm MJ Davy. I represent, I guess, lacrosse in our town. I've been doing lacrosse at Holbrook Palmer since 2005. And I guess like, I think maybe to understand more because at the last meeting, I thought that we were all supposed to get together and we, we didn't. I mean, you mentioned to me that it was removable fence, but I didn't know about some of these other changes. So I again feel a little, gosh, you know, everybody knows I'm lacrosse and I know you met with Mike Milano, but nobody met with me to talk about how it affects lacrosse. And we're out there in the same season, lacrosse is a spring sport. So we're out there February to May as well, even a little bit into June. Also, we're doing, we do some summer and baseball's been out there, uh, you know, Tuesday nights. So it's still, it's going later into the season. I'm also concerned about fall ball. I think that baseball's doing a lot of fall ball. And I think that that's going to impact, I think if you build it, you're going to all be out there using it as much as you can. And you're significantly putting a big investment into the park. And I just think we're going to see a lot more baseball there than we do now. I think building big stands is going to bring a lot of people. I think it's, I frankly think it's over, as a neighbor, not even speaking for lacrosse, I just think it's an overbuild for, for looking to beautify and safety. I don't think we need to put this big grandstand and bathrooms and. I don't understand who in the town, and we've, you know, gotten rid of all of our town employees, and who's going to be maintaining this and what happens to this agreement when it gets lost in two years? And everybody just loosely redefines how this thing was written because it doesn't seem to be anybody's really in control right now. There's a lot of flux in the town and I'm really concerned about a, a program of this scale with kind of what's happening on in our town right now, the library and everything else we have to do. So I guess I'm just a little disappointed that a flagpole is going to be out in the middle of the field permanently. I just think that's a danger for kids running around the field, for dogs, for people running around the field. The fence sounds like it's more cumbersome to remove when we're sharing the field in the same season than I thought it was going to be. I think we'll find that the footprint's going to take up more space. I think it's very gender specific. It's a boys' sport. There's not an opportunity for girls and for softball. And I think we're limiting girls' use out of the field. And I think that that's a real issue as well. I think that the park is for everyone's use. I think currently baseball uses it, soccer uses it, lacrosse uses it. There's boys and girls. And if we restrict this much usage to just one sport, I think we're changing kind of the dynamics of the park. And I think that would be unfortunate. There was also talk about trees being a buffer for the neighbors on Watkins that would kind of be added to the field. I haven't heard that, but that would be an issue because it was taking up more open space. The other thing that worries me is as a parent, the lips here of the field. Our kids come through here to school today. And as they ride through the park and go to school to go to the fence or to Encinal, this is kind of a scary thing. Like you don't look behind there. Right now, we can look clearly through and see that there's no kids hanging out there. There's gang tagging that I've seen on the fence back there. So there's some unsavory things that start happening when you're blocking off areas apart. You can't see what's going on back there. So frankly, as a parent, I wouldn't feel that comfortable sending my kid blindly through there anymore because now there's a barrier that I don't really know what's going on back there. And this is not direct baseball. This is just anytime of the day or the afternoon. I think scoreboard, I'm concerned about that being up for 12 months of the year. I'm not sure if it's electronic, but I just kind of think that's a little bit of an overkill. It's something that we're all going to have to live with when we're not, you know, baseball's not being played. I think that when we left the last meeting, it was an opportunity for us all to come together. Soccer, lacrosse, baseball, talk about resurfacing the whole field and not just the corner for baseball. And I'm disappointed that we didn't have that conversation. I know soccer said they had some money to do it. And I think that would have been an overall improvement for the park that we all got together and did that. And I'm still happy to do that because I think it's important to do, improving the little bit of, you know, grass that we all have for the kids to play on. So I think that's something that I would still like to see that user groups do. I guess I'm not quite sure where else there's a facility like this that we really, there's a really the demand for it in our town, in the area. I don't know baseball that well, but it just seems like it's a faulty big project that the money could be spent, you know, really to beautification and not building such a large structure. Just checking my address. Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm not a fan for a number of reasons of doing it. And I think the main one is just that we're restricting use to one sport rather than increasing for everybody. So.
Are there any questions?
I just have one question. So when you say it's restricting the use, are you primarily talking about the outfield fence? Because, I mean, setting aside the poles you might run into, the, the grandstand is not noticeably impacting the use of, of the field, but the, the outfield obviously segments off the, the field. Or are you also including the assumption that if you build something like this, there's going to be increased use of the, of the, of that portion of the field? And therefore, whether there's an outfield fence there or not, it's basically going to be taken out of commission?
Yeah, I think, I definitely think that it's going to be increased. I also wonder who's going to manage, if I have an activity, taking down the fence? Who am I calling? Who's running this? Who, if I take it down and I mess it up? I mean, there just seems to be a lot of loose parts and agreements for organizations that aren't really, you know, speaking to each other that much. I mean, there really have to be some procedures and I would, it just seems to be a lot to manage at a time when our town just doesn't seem to be in a good position to be taking on more expense, more projects. And I, I do just see it as restricting it. The, the grandstand certainly doesn't restrict lacrosse use, but I've got to imagine it's going to bring the whole footprint out. You might say that it's not, but right now there's just a fence there and they're building a big buildings. And I think we're just encroaching and approaching on the open space. That's going to be one thing. And I don't really know what the process is, you know, with where this is in the decision process. But I think if it's approved and then little minor adjustments keep happening, I just, my fear is that it's going to keep getting bigger and bigger and encroach on what open space we do have out there.
My understanding of what you say is that you feel the improvement of the grass there and the baseball does not compensate for the other negatives.
Right. I think you can improve the field without doing all this building. I think if you want to improve and beautify, there's a lot we could do with the money rather than some of this building.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask the speakers to try to limit themselves for a minute. And I'll be, I'll be stopwatch and keep people calm. Next speaker, please. Yes?
I see a established advantage to tweet right here.
That's about 50 years ago.
Hi, my name's Perry Thorne. I live on Marion Lane. I have two boys who play Menlo Athens Little League, benefited from the great league. One of them went all the way to high school, was a very accomplished baseball player. Got started at MA Little League. As a parent, it was great fun to watch our kids do that. There, those two boys are now adults. They play tennis in the park sometimes and their parents play there a lot. I have a couple of comments and I also have some quick questions. I don't know if it's out of order to kind of throw open the information of questions. I think they have quick answers. I'll put them out there. If it's inappropriate, you can just let them go. If there's an answer, I think the planning commission might be interested in the answers to the questions. We don't already have them. So I'm going to get started. First, I was looking for a written or electronic copy of the plan, proposed plan that was available to the public. If there is one, I'd like to be pointed to. It's likely just educating myself on the details.
Sure. And for anybody else in the future, I have my name and phone number and email address in the notice. And we have copies of the plans at Town Hall. Happy to review them with anybody at any time. Just come to the building counter.
Okay. So I apologize if some of the things I'm not sure about are in the plan. Let's see. The, I'm a little uncertain about what impact there might be on tennis courts from this proposed plan. I heard that the walking path, it's not adjacent to the tennis court, is going to be removed. And the one that's just adjacent to the tennis court will remain and will become the walking path. I can tell you from playing on the two courts next to that path, that there's a lot of traffic there. People with dogs, kids with bicycles, adults talking. They stop, they talk. It's kind of disruptive. And if, when there, when the existing path that's going to be removed is available, some of that is cut down. So that's definitely going to be an impact. I'm not sure from what you presented, whether the actual footprint of the playing field is going to be removed or is going to remain where it is. If it's going to be moved, I'm concerned about foul ball traffic onto those, certainly those two tennis courts there. So.
Quickly, it's, it's actually going to go out about like five feet?
Yeah.
Five feet.
So home plate will be five feet further from the tennis courts.
You'll see less foul balls.
Okay, that's good.
Plus it will be the overhang over the backstop to further prevent that from happening.
Well, the backstop, I don't think would impact the courts, but.
Well, side ball to the.
Down the first baseline would, yeah. Okay, good. That's good. You mentioned, and I've heard anecdotally, that part of the plan is to do a serious resurfacing of all the tennis courts. Is that correct?
Yeah, this is part of the proposed plan from the beginning.
And that's in the current version of the plan?
Yes.
Is there, okay. So other than that, are there any other impacts on the tennis courts that have been surfaced or discussed or none?
And the path, the, going back to your path question, the two paths would basically come together. So you would have a wider path there. It wouldn't be on traffic going right along the fence line. I think you'll still, I don't know what to.
Well, it shows it going along the fence line.
Right. That's the existing path that's there. The other path just kind of comes a little closer to it. So it's a wider path than what is currently there, but yes, it will be adjoining.
Okay. For tennis players, it would be a positive if there are restrooms close by and they are open all the time. And I'll just comment that as a user of existing restrooms by the play area, I would be skeptical about tapping into that plumbing for these new restrooms. I'll point out those restrooms are often inoperative. I mean, it's funny, but it's not funny. I mean, that's just a true thing. They're often not open. And I, I'm sorry for the people who have to work to keep them, try to keep them going. I'll just note that I noticed that the town put a lot of money and effort into redoing all the irrigation in that whole grass area last year. And I'm assuming that that's not going to benefit what your plan would be for redoing the irrigation. So that's just too bad that didn't.
Oddly enough, many of the irrigation lines that were done were done substandard. And we went in and actually cleaned the lines, replaced sprinklers and helped replace the timer.
Okay, good. Thank you. Let's see. The, I guess my final question or comment is, I didn't feel comforted by the statement on the one hand that there are probably going to be up to 100 spectators. I know capacity's 200. There could be 100 spectators. I've never, I've been over there for a lot of existing Little League games on the tennis courts. There's never been 100 spectators there. And you said yourself, some people can't go now. But, but you also said it's not going to increase usage, increase number of spectators. So I think there's an inconsistency there. My guess would be there will be more spectators. You build it, they'll come. And I think parking will be an issue. And I think Little League noise will be more of an issue for the tennis players or other people enjoying the park for the purposes. I think that ought to just be acknowledged as realistic.
And I will acknowledge that. To, to clarify at the point, the increase in usage or number of games will not increase. The number of spectators realistically, you're right. I think that there will be more grandparents and more family members that will come to the games. Yes. And we strongly encourage carpool now. Everybody knows that parking is only limited as it is. And people do a great job of that.
We live two blocks away. We often hear cheers and chatting and game activity. I guess that's just a natural consequence of having a lot of kids and their supporters. Thank you.
Thank you. Great.
I didn't see you giving me the chokes on.
Hi, my name is Gina Ryan and I'm a resident in Lindenwood. I have two children ages seven and nine and we love Holbrook Palmer Park. It's one of our favorite places. My son plays Little League and a facility like this I feel is needed. I think Carl's been very thoughtful in the detail, like blends with the park. My in-laws are elderly and they have a hard time. They have to drag all that stuff out so they're not getting. so they're not getting sun exposure. And I think it would be really nice for the grandparents to have something like this. I love the bathrooms, my daughter's now a tennis player, she's at the courts all the time. And I don't think tennis and baseball would interfere because tennis is mainly during the day until five. I don't see people necessarily out in the evening. I think the two would complement each other. And the bathrooms, again, a great thing, I think it would be great for everyone. Don't feel that there would be any noise issues, we got the lab's train going right through there. And I like the idea of making the fields, you know, leveling them out, making them safe. I think everyone would benefit, you know, lacrosse, soccer, Little League. And, you know, this Little League organization definitely is the ones putting the money into the park. I don't see any other organization putting money in like Little League does. My husband and probably twenty other parents are out there, you know, a weekend here and a weekend there, moving dirt and, you know, doing whatever else is needed just to make that field safe. It's pretty amazing if you knew the time and effort that went out there. I mean, it is amazing. And again, we are a nonprofit organization and people do really care. And I do disagree with the statement that, I think people, more people probably would come. And I think that's a good thing because I think people coming in to take a walk in the park, they're riding their bikes. I mean, we ride our bikes over there. I don't necessarily know you would see traffic with cars, but there's a lot of people that just come in on skateboards and bikes and would probably stop and watch. And baseball's a great social thing, it's a great community thing. I hope when my kids are gone, my husband and I walk through the park and pick up a game. It's fun, it's a lot of fun. So anyway, I think just some good common sense here.
Do we have any questions?
It's looking to tie myself here. My name's Paul Tannelli, I live in Lloydens Park. And former commissioner on the park commission from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and six. And I would just strongly encourage you as the planning commission to really study the proposal and consider it very carefully. And personally would encourage you not to approve the proposal to build the stands and the other facilities. Now, when we were, when I was on the park commission, we were under the charter under which the land was donated to the city. At that time, we were told no new buildings in the park. Now, I understand the charter's expired. And now that it's expired, it's like there's a land grab going on down at the park. When it was under the charter, no new buildings in the park and no organized sports. Under that, the park commission recommended to the council not to approve Little League in the park. I wanted to see Little League in the park, but according to the charter, I voted no because of no organized sports. So here we are ten years later. Backstop was supposed to be a removable backstop that was taken down at the end of each season. That lasted about three or four years. They claimed due to wear and tear on the backstop that they wanted to leave it up year-round and it's been up year-round. So that is one area where I think Little League has kind of fallen short on a commitment under the original agreement to put Little League in the park. The maintenance of the field, I think, would be another issue. I know you're talking about the lack of safety at the field. And I agree, but I know that Little League at that time also agreed for maintenance of the field. And I would say that where I would submit that at least part of that responsibility for the unsafe field now would fall on the shoulders of Little League. As far as permanent structures are concerned, as I mentioned, the charter no longer in effect. But I still think that as the people of Atherton, we still need to honor the spirit of the charter. Can we work with it a little bit here and there, obviously, since it's expired? But I don't think we just toss it out. And I think we do need to still consider that. Some of the field improvements can be made, as MJ said, and safety issues mitigated by improving the field without putting up any more of the stands and the buildings that were proposed. Also, as far as the tennis fields are concerned, the first year Little League came into the park, they had a number of different age groups playing ball in the park. It turned out that the older players were able to hit foul balls into the tennis courts. So then the play was limited to the younger groups. So I would hate to see any kind of a structure here lead to an increased participation by some of the older players that would increase some of the danger of people using the park. I know you said that everything would remain the same and I appreciate that consideration. And I think that it would have to remain the same just for the safety of the people. And when you talk about super-serving a group for what amounts to about forty-eight days a year, three months of games, four games a week, you're looking at about less than fifteen percent of the activity of the park. So I think you have to consider the fact that you would be really super-serving one group for just a small portion of the year. Thank you.
Do you?
Okay.
Are there any questions?
I have a question, although I don't think it's necessarily for you. Is, I believe it's only AAA that's playing in the park. Is that because their agreement says that? Or is that just the way it's turned out? You mentioned it years ago.
I think it was kind of an informal understanding after that first season, when tennis players were complaining about foul balls into the tennis courts and some of the older players hit it with a little more force. That became kind of an issue. And then after that, it was just the, I don't know the ages, I don't have kids that play Little League. I have eighteen nieces and nephews who did, but it was just kind of an agreement after that first season.
Okay, so there's no formal agreement that double A isn't played in?
Not.
Our majors don't play there, it's just a.
Our double A teams play at Los Lomitas. Our single A teams play at German-American School in Middle Park. Our majors play at Burgess Park in Middle Park. Our triple A plays, and that's our biggest division, plays at Holbrook Palmer and Willow Oaks Park. And to answer your concerns about foul balls, foul balls are going to happen. Even in pitching machine in double A, it is rather hard to hit a foul ball with force. Foul balls are generally.